All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough regular meeting. Tonight's March -- thanks Frank.
[laughing]
Tonight is March 7th, 2016. This is the regular meeting of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. We put in a yeoman's effort last meeting, so Ms. Spinelli and I were kind to the group tonight. We've got a relatively abbreviated agenda. I happen to know we have a scout and training in the audience who picked tonight to come, and I told them he picked a good night. Last meeting would have been a little longer. As always, we'll start with visitors. Any visitors who'd like to be recognized, and then approval of minutes. Ms. Pillsbury's going to then take us through the Teaching and Learning Highlight, which is the credit fair for life that the high school students just went through recently. We have the Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce STEM donation. We'll then take a look at the School Committee meeting dates for next school year. We also have the annual School Committee vote on school choice participation, and then we're fortunate enough to have some donations tonight to take a look at and accept. Then, of course, any other matters. Mr. Uden's unable to be with us tonight. He gave me a call. Other than that, anybody have anything before we start? If not, we'll -- and welcome to our -- both our student representatives with us tonight.
Yes, it's --
Any visitors who'd like to be recognized before we start? Yes, sir, if you'd please walk up to the microphone and state your name.
My name's Joe Garrity. I'm a student from Foxborough High School. I have something good that the committee might like. Since we still go to school on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, and then if people celebrate those holidays, they would take a religious day. I was just wondering why we don't do it for Good Friday because if -- because you can just take it as religious day like you would do for Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, at the beginning of the year. Like, we should do that for Good Friday, I feel like, because it's not like a federal holiday, it's a town holiday.
I believe when we had to go to school last year on Good Friday --
Yeah, the half-day.
Right, but I believe that anyone who wanted to stay home wasn't marked absent, Joe, and that was only an exception because of the snow days.
Yeah, like, I was just wondering, because I know we do it for, like, we come to school Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur.
But you haven't excused absence if you're Jewish.
Yeah, well, if you celebrate --
There's different ways to do it, Joe, and there's no wrong way and there's no right way. What we try to do is if we think there are going to be -- we look at the size of groups of people that live in our community, and if we think it's manageable, we do it one way, and if we think this -- we can be able to cover things, we might do it another way. So it's a good thought.
Why do you think because Good Friday, because if you go to church, it can still be excused absent, if you don't, you still come to school.
That is correct.
Well, I was just wondering if we can possibly think of that in the future.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate that. Okay, we have the minutes from February 22nd. I know I had one very minor word-choice adjustment, if we can, but I don't know if anybody else said anything first. Just Janet, if we could, where we approved at the last meeting the Foxborough Manants Workers Association.
Page, please.
Four.
Thank you.
If we could just change the verb to approve the agreement as opposed to accept. I think it's semantics, but we did approve that contract as presented. I would appreciate that. Any other adjustments? If not, motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bevy.
I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four-zero, thank you. Ms. Pillsbury, and do you want to set this up, Ms. Spinelli?
I don't think Ms. Pillsbury needs much of an introduction at all.
Much of a setup.
So I'm just going to turn it over to her, and then I'll wrap up later. How's that?
Terrific.
Okay, so for the last nine years, we have done a credit fair with the Schools Career Partnership, and being this year, we were on our own. Debbie and I met with Lorraine White, and we decided we were going to do our own fair this year. So over the summer, I worked, touching base with all the people that we needed to touch base with, and we got our venue donated this year, which was marvelous, at Gillette Stadium at Showcase Live, and that was through -- Diana Griffin was very, very nice and supportive, and Kim Davies was the manager, and she just helped make the day go. It was a breeze. So after getting the venue set, then I spent a few weeks getting volunteers, and you need about eighty volunteers to run this event, and a lot of the volunteers for this event are true financial advisors and bankers, and then you have your community members. So I touched base with a lot of the people that we did our fairs with in the past, and I asked them -- I knew before we left the partnership that they were going to come do our fair with us, because I went around and said, "Will you come? If we do our own, will you come?" And they said absolutely they would come. Mansfield Bank had a huge showing this year, whereas last year, they only had one or two people. So that was a marvelous -- I mean, the more volunteers you have, because of the day of the event, people back out. So we got our venue set, we had our volunteers all there, and then the next step was to work with the students, and --
Can you step back one second?
Yes.
And just give a quick summary of what is Credit for Life Fair?
Okay, Credit for Life Fair is a financial literacy day for seniors only. So we really want to give them a snapshot in time, five years out of college, what they are going to be making five years out of college. So they're not making a lot of money, they come with a lot of debt, and that's the way it is. So back in -- so we got our volunteers, so then back in October, I meet with the entire class, and I say, "Okay, I'm going to give you a selection sheet. You're all going to pick a profession." They pick one, they put their name on the sheet, they give it back to me. I then assign that profession and income. The kids don't -- they don't know anything until the day of the fair. All they know is they picked that they're going to be, like, one of the students here, Rav Mir, picked he was going to be a fashion designer, thinking he's going to make a huge bucks. So after -- and so you each have a spending sheet. So what happens is the kids pick the profession, I assign that profession and income, we go through all the formulas, and this is what their spending sheet looks like. So Rav Mir had $1,698 to spend for a month. This is just a month snapshot. But he then has to go to fourteen different booths, so all the booths are in the center here. They have to go to every booth, and they have to buy a plan. They can't say they're living with mom, because I'm going to charge them rent to live with their mother. We do make a military exclusion. They don't have to pay for rent. They don't have to pay their security, but they do have to pay rent. They can't say that they don't need a wardrobe, because they have to have casual clothes to go out. They're not going to be in their military uniform all the time. So when they go to every booth, they have to buy a plan, and then the people in the booth sign off, so we know that they've been there. And as they go through, they deduct on the back sheet all their expenses. Some of them will find that they're running into problems early in the go, in the game here, and so they go to the true financial planners, who are all lined up in the back of the room, and these are just some snapshots of kids at the fair. And they -- so they'll sit with the financial planner, and then they'll be advised to go back and return the car. Is Rav here? Okay, Rav Mir, and I can talk about this, because he's talked about it with everybody, decided that he thought the cars were junk that they had, so he bought the Mercedes. And he did real well, because he went there first, and as he went through the fair, he found he was having trouble. So he went to the financial planner, and the guy said, "You need to go get another job," and Rav Mir's like, "Well, okay." So he gets in line to go get another job, but we called a recession in the middle of the fair, and Rav's standing there, next guy in line, like, "What do you mean, you're calling a recession? I need that job, because I can't afford my car." And he kind of flipped out, and he's like, "This is so not good." And then he went to the insurance booth, and they made him buy apartment insurance, and he was like, "What do you mean apartment insurance? Who has that?" And they -- so then he spun the Wheel of Doom, and he had a flood, and he was like, "Yeah, I didn't buy flood insurance." So it's really -- so the money had to come out of his personal savings, because he didn't have renters' insurance. So he said it was a very enlightening experience. He said it made him think of things that he wouldn't normally think of, and that's really what we're just trying to spark, is that interest to make them stop and think that maybe mom and dad have been paying all your expenses up to now, but when you get out into the real world, this is really what's going to happen. Some of the kids did really well, and others did not, but that's okay. They weren't in debt at the end. I had some kids come take the -- because I collected all their spending sheets. Some of the kids came in and wanted to take them home and show their parents how they had done. Some did well. One girl was in the hole $100, and she thought she was doing really well, and she was. So if we can just make them stop and think, we've done really well. I think they all had a great experience, so they -- we bust them up. They each started at the booth that's up in the left-hand corner, in the right-hand corner. That's where the -- for traffic flow reasons, we have them start at a certain booth, and there are certain booths you can't start at, because you don't have a car, you can't buy insurance if you don't have a car. And then the traffic flows from there on in. They can have roommates, but they can't cohabitate in the same bed. They each have to have their own bed. They can split the food bill if they have a roommate, so if they're creative, they can do very well here. And if not, they've learned that they need to make some adjustments going forward. The one thing I think that was most amazing to the kids is that they really don't make a lot of money five years out of school, and they thought that they would. There was a student who was a graphic designer, and he was making $45,000. He said, "I thought I'd be making 85." I said, "Well, not so." So I think they had a good time. The feedback was very positive. We will be doing it again next year. I will probably start planning in September for February, March in there. We had 220 students participate this year, which was great, and it was fun doing it on our own this year. I think we did a really great job. I think the students had fun. The volunteers all said that they would come back. I've already touched base with them, and we'll tweak some things for next year's fair, but I think --
So you've got a couple of the students here, if you wouldn't mind, I'll invite them up now, Jason.
Okay, so this is Jason, and this is Emily, and Melissa also.
And Mikel, did you go? Okay, goodie.
Good afternoon.
So tell us a little bit about your highlights of the credit fair.
You first?
Sorry, I'm a little bit sick. I really enjoyed the credit fair. I had taken the personal finance class with Mr. McCabe first semester, so it was really nice to be able to put everything that I had learned in that class to use during credit fair. I ended up doing really well. I had money left over every month, and I still had money in my savings account at the end. I had two roommates, and it was just like a really fun experience to see all of the senior class working together, and it was interesting to see what people grouped together.
Like Emily, I also took Mr. McCabe's personal finance class, and I really did enjoy this experience. I think it's very important that we do this, because not everyone takes his class, and not everyone may be going to college, or they may be going right into the real world. So that's why I think it's very important, and I really did enjoy myself.
I wish I took Mr. Mary. Let me tell you. I -- so I walked in, and I'm like, "I don't know how to do this math," and then eventually I figured it out, and then I liked it, because I did pretty well. I didn't go into debt. Well, obviously, like, I had college loans and that kind of debt, but like, the money I had per month, I had money left over, so I liked it.
And I also really enjoyed the experience. I had picked a career that would be similar to what I'm looking forward to with music, so I got music production, which is a really scary thought, because, you know, music people can't make a really good living, but I went in, I had two roommates as well, I worked with them the whole day, and we kind of had our plans together. We cut things, like, we took the bus, or we didn't have a TV, but we had this, or we had cell phones, and I ended up with, like, I don't know, around $400 a month extra. And I thought it was a really good experience, because you learn things that you wouldn't think about until you're five years out of college. For example, I know something I had no idea, was that you're supposed to have three months' worth of expenses in your savings account, which is something I would have never learned until, God forbid, I needed three months of expenses in my savings account. So I think we all definitely learned from the adults that were all there, willing to help us, and really enthusiastic to have us all there.
Did you have a roommate?
I did, I had two. Emily Connolly has name.
Did you have a roommate?
I had two roommates as well.
That helps.
Yeah.
That helps with the savings.
Well, and one of the booths is called luxury, and you get there, and the people in the booth try to see if they've got cell phones, if they've got their nails done, if their hair is frosted, because if they say, "I don't need any luxury items here," we're charging you $100 for the phone and the nails. So you can't say that you don't have any luxury items, and then they try to sell you, "Well, if you give us another thousand to enter, to take a trip, we'll give you a card, you know, a gift card to spend in the store." And the kids are like, "Okay," and, you know, and then they realize, when they step back, that they maybe should have thought about that, and they maybe should not have given the extra $1,000. So I think overall, the kids had a great day.
It was fascinating. I noticed that some kids said they had to get a second job to make their expenses meet, and some kids chose to get a second job, either because they wanted -- did you --
Sorry. I chose to get a second job and ended up making an additional $500 a month. My income per month after taxes and everything was $3,397, so I ended up taking in an additional $500, just because I knew that if there was a recession and I couldn't find a job when I needed one, I'd rather have one in advance, and I ended up having an extra $1,116 left over every month, which was something that I was really glad I did.
I want to be a roommate.
Well, and the people like the doctors and the nurses and the lawyers could not get jobs, another job, because they just didn't have time in their life to get another job, so they really had to budget. So the kids caught on pretty quick, I think, when they looked at their income, they were like, "Ooh, I better get in line for another job, just so that I have that cushion." And that's what Emily did.
And I was also working with one of my roommates, and we decided to go get another job, because after going to the education booth, he offered us to get our master's degree in whatever program we wanted to. So after seeing the cost of grad school, we were like, "Well, this is not going to work unless we have two jobs," so that's what we decided.
I had the pleasure of being there this year. I was very excited to be invited, and I came across the same issue with the car. Someone really wanted that fancy car, but then they realized they'd have to take a second job if they were going to do it, and they were worrying about dating, and there was a whole dilemma there. And I also got to experience someone looking for a wife, because they wanted a rich wife, they didn't make enough money. They didn't cohabitate.
They don't make rich wives.
They did get married. No, well, I told him I was already married, but he --
That wasn't an official booth, by the way.
No, 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 no. They got married, but they had separate rooms. She made way more money than him, so they got -- they did not cohabitate. They did get married and had separate rooms, I just want to let you know that. And I got to be an actress and only made $35,000, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's amazing that they come out of school and they think that they're going to make a million bucks, and they're not going to have to budget too much, and they can kind of do what they want, but for a lot of them, it was just a real reality check, and that's okay. That's what this day is for.
That's what, yeah.
And somebody had said they wished that the juniors could go, and, you know, maybe we take a look back at that. We will be making some changes for next year, so just to make it a little bit better and flow a little bit better for the students, so.
I think it exchanged city, like, and it progresses up, and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful program to do.
Thanks.
Great job, Ellen.
Thanks. It's a lot of fun. It's really nice to see them do so well, and we did have, the community as a whole did compliment us on our students' behavior and their dress, because they all -- the requirement is business casual, no sweatpants, no shorts. So they all do come dressed appropriately and very respectful, and it was very well noted by everybody that was there. And they did come up and said something to Lorraine, and they came up and said something to me and to the other supervisors that were there for the day. They made a comment, so they are all to be commended for their -- for a job well done.
Excellent.
Other comments?
That's great, I want to go next year.
I know.
If you come back, we'll give you a job.
Ellen, remind me, I know we've featured this before, and I always enjoy hearing the story, but how was it different? Remind me, when we did it with other schools? Was it just a bigger venue, but all -- everybody simultaneously?
Well, with the other venue you're splitting, the numbers were split amongst four schools, and this year, we had, as in the first year that we did the fair, if Debbie remembers, we had all our own students there this year, and that hasn't happened for seven or eight years, because --
We've been paying extra for most of our kids to be able to go, but we had to pay extra to the partnership, so that we could send most of our kids, or as many as could go. Not that there was a limit, but there was another conflict. So this is the first time doing it all on our own. But the other schools would send, I think we were told, could have sixty or seventy slots per school.
Correct.
But we would then pay extra for additional.
I see.
So this way, we didn't have to worry about any other schools, and we have all the signage and --
And it's right here in Foxborough.
It's right here in Foxborough, housed in Foxborough, so -- and it was nice, we got the PIP grant, which was phenomenal, and then JED Insurance made a contribution, and then Foxborough Rotary also contributed. So between all of that, it was really, it made life very easy for us this year.
Yeah, I am very thankful and want to recognize our appreciation for those folks who contributed. I will also say, though, I know from the conversations the committee's had, that we would support this every year, to your point, and we'll find the money.
Thanks.
So let's continue to pursue the available grants, but I think we all would like to see this happen every year, and if we can do it on our own, that's terrific. I think things like this and the Career Day that you sponsor, you know, these are such valuable lessons, and you guys can tell me if this is wrong, but I just think things like this are so helpful to what the kids, as you know, so I'm very appreciative of the programs you put on.
And next is Senior Project, and Jason's going out to spend six weeks with Foxborough.
Can't wait.
Where are you going? Spend your six weeks?
The Firehouse in Foxborough, yep. I can't wait, very excited, very excited.
Let me just ask you guys one more question. Is there anything you would have done differently, or that you've suggested to Ms. Pillsbury that we consider for future events?
I don't think so. I think it ran very good, just at some points, it could get a little crowded, but other than that, I think I had a great time. I think everyone else had a very good time.
Yeah, I agree with Jason. There were times when there were a lot of people, like, crowding around certain booths, especially near the end, but overall, it was a really great experience.
That's part of life, too. Waiting in line.
Early bird gets the worm.
We spend so much time talking about college and career readiness, and this is life readiness. I mean, whatever you choose to do after high school, this is going to help you, no matter what. And Jason, I hope you'll come back and talk to us about your senior project.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'd really like to hear about your experience.
Yeah, we've got thirty kids going out, starting April 11th.
Fantastic, exciting.
So we just wrapped up with Credit Fair, and now I'm into the Senior Project, getting the kids lined up and ready to go, do site visits and that kind of thing. So it is exciting to see where they're going and what they're going to be doing, and it's a smaller pool this year, but they'll all have a great time.
Just going to ask --
How many students?
Thirty this year, as opposed to seventy last year.
What do you attribute that to, Ellen?
Well, a lot of the students who wanted to do Senior Project this year are taking four or five APs, and it's really impossible.
Yeah.
Because they have no time in their day.
Yeah.
So they -- they're regretful, they're glad they're taking the classes that they are, but they're regretful that they won't have the opportunity to do Senior Project. So I'm already recruiting for next year's Senior Project. I've met five or six kids already for kids for next year.
You know, but both avenues are winners, so.
Correct, absolutely. And, you know, they'll do fine, so it'll be interesting to hear the feedback when they come back. I'm excited for them.
Anything else? Well, this is just one more program I think we're very proud of that's outside the norm, so thank you, and thank you for the students for coming in tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our voice go representative would like a copy. You can have mine, so you can see what the kids said, if you wouldn't mind. It's good to see what your future's going to bring.
Thank you, Ellen.
That was terrific.
That was --
I think it's a great example of --
Thank you for having me.
-- why we brought our career services all in-house. Because you just get so much more done.
Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce STEM donation.
Let's see Kara.
Skip it.
Janet, did you hear back from Kara that she was going to be here?
I didn't hear, no, no, from Kara. No, it's been set up, I thought.
What?
You both had set it up a couple weeks ago, correct?
Okay.
I didn't hear anything.
Might have to put that on another one.
Why don't we push that, and if she arrives, we'll -- and if not, we'll do it another time. So shall we jump to the School Committee meetings?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this is next year's School Committee meeting dates. I'm guessing we did our normal three other Monday.
Yes, Janet did this for you, so she will be happy to.
Janet gets to tell us about it.
Yes.
Janet, we should make you go to the center table. No, I'm just kidding.
No. I think I'm good right here.
Yeah, just lean into the microphone.
Your dates for next year?
Anything different, Janet, from what we've done before?
Um, I don't think there's really anything different. It's just that there are just some dates to be aware of, as you look at the calendar for next year, in terms of when some holidays fall. And I attach to the back what the legal holidays are for the year, so that you can compare that as well.
Yeah, thank you, that's awesome.
I thought that was excellent.
Oh, good, I'm glad you liked it.
Thank you. I've never seen it put together like this. I really appreciate it.
It helped me, too.
But it really, I really appreciate it.
So tried for the first and third Mondays, and there are a few exceptions, as usual.
I actually had one question, and it's actually more for Bill and Debbie, but I see that our January, because January 1st is on a Sunday, the legal holiday is the first Monday, the second, so we bumped it to the 9th and the 23rd. We usually meet and vote on the budget that very last. Is that going to impact you at all, if we go with this?
No, we usually do whatever the last Monday --
Oh, I know, but I just, this is a full week earlier than we would actually have to do it. And we have to vote on it by January 31st. I'm just asking, you will have enough time.
Well, oftentimes, we have been asked just to hold in reserve that third Monday. That's exactly right. That is the last in the event.
Well, this isn't the last, that's what I'm saying.
But that's what I mean. I think what Bevy is saying, what Bevy is saying, other times when the first, when we've done first and third, and the third is not exactly the last Monday, what we've done is, say, if you don't feel comfortable voting on the 23rd, then we'll come back the next week, because we still have one more shot.
Right.
This has been the calendar you've had before, and we do still have the meeting on the 23rd, understanding if you need an extra, you still have one more week to go.
I know, it's just the way, I just wanted to make sure you all would have enough time, because this time around, usually, we're on the first and the last.
Well, we're done by December.
Because Martin Luther King's birthday is usually that third, and the way it falls this time around, it's the second, it's the earlier. You see what I -- it's the second Monday, Martin Luther King, so this is, yeah.
I lost the question.
Well, I think the basic point is we're done in December.
So that's actually --
Well, I bet it's done in December. The only, we just have, we have the two January meetings to come back to answer any further questions you have.
Right.
But it's not really, as you know, it's not really on us at that point, it's more[1645.47] more the committee's follow-up questions, so it's all on you.
I just just want to get it done a week before.
This is what we've done in the past, when it's fallen like this.
I don't have a problem with it. It's just, it is different than, than we've done it in the last few years anyway.
The calendar does that to us.
Sometimes it does. That is true.
Well, I think these look like they could be approved, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposed calendar for school committee meetings as presented, typically the first and third Mondays of each month.
We have a second? Okay, and now we have time for any further discussion on the motion, and I see a hand in the audience. Joe, is this about the motion to approve the dates?
I was wondering, so for the, we still have a meeting if it says Rashashana?
Well, you celebrate the first and second day. I can't guarantee I'll be here. It depends on my family.
That's actually what we were supposed to bring up.
That's a good question.
Is that one of them is scheduled.
It's the holiest day, it's the holiest day of the year.
Didn't we have the list on the front that said next, oh, it says it right there.
It's the holiest day of the year.
That's why, Janet, call that out, so that you could deliberate that, and if you want something different, it might be a good idea.
I can't promise at this point that I'll be here, but that's, it's not going to hurt anybody, I'm sure. And that is if I'm voted in for the three-year term.
Thank you for running again.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think that's a good observation. So we have a motion to approve it as presented. We can vote down that motion if anyone has a concern with Rashashana, or we can go forward. We can always make a change, too, as we get closer. So thank you for pointing that out, Joe, and Janet and Deb. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve as presented? Opposed? None. Four zero, approved. Thank you. School committee vote on school choice participation, and I think it's always helpful if you just remind us what.
Okay. So this is an annual vote that each committee in each community in Massachusetts must take under the state regulations as to whether or not you want to participate in school choice, and we've included in the packet all of the pertinent laws and legal references about school choice, and we do that every year, and the committee is to undertake that deliberation every year and decide if you want to participate. Foxborough has not ever participated. If, if their vote is to participate, you can see there are certainly deadlines involved, but the vote, vote to participate means that kids who reside here could make another choice. Kids from anywhere can choose to apply to come here, given space sort of issues. So it's, it's a standard thing that you consider every year, and it does go over there, what goes over in the regulations, what would have to happen if you participate.
Does anybody have any questions about that before we vote on it? I know most of us have been through this, all of us, except for Maryland, have been through it. I, I always, being so proud of our school system, think, you know, all of our students should just come here, and I'm content to have just our students come here, and, but, but I don't want to, I don't want to.
The surrounding towns of ours do not participate, so it tends to be something that trends regionally, that if one region participates, then everybody does, and there's a lot of mixing and matching and transportation, back and forth, and if you, if you don't, then most people in the region tend not to.
It seems to me, in the time I've been around school committee, we've never participated in this. Was there a time when we did?
Foxborough has not, no.
I'm going to do, historically, you know. Amy, you have any experience with this? Anyone who does it?
Nope.
Well, I wonder why this is still, there must be, are there parts of the state that do?
There are.
Yes.
Take advantage, yeah.
And who pays for the town, whose student it is, would pay for the student to go outside the town?
Correct.
The town? Like, if a Paco student went to Nanceville, would pay for.
It makes sense for some districts, and I'll give you one example that is always highlighted. So Avon is a very, very, very tiny, tiny community that probably couldn't exist as its own school system without school choice.
I see.
So they do participate. They get a lot of students from Rockton, Randolph, other communities around them that want a smaller school or school district, and, or some kids will go there because they can play athletics there. They may not in Rockton, which is a very large school. So there are lots of different reasons why they would, but, you know, Avon often jokes if they wouldn't have athletic teams without school choice. So this, this, there are positive reasons why people participate. It kind of depends on where you are, what the market is, but I think also, this, this, I don't want to say there's already school choice, because there is a choice in the community. We have a charter school in our community. So I think that, I don't know if people feel necessarily the need for a lot of choice. That's, a lot of factors that go into it.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion about participating in school choice?
I'll make a motion to not participate in school choice.
Thank you.
I guess as, as presented.
Yeah, and as our precedent.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero, not to participate in school choice. Thank you. Donations.
Well, we have three donations for the committee to accept. One is from the Foxborough Diamond Club, which is our boosters club, for three thousand sixty-two dollars eighteen cents for batting cage for the baseball team, which is a wonderful donation. And they've been really terrific partners, working with us as to what pieces of things that we want out there that we're going to fund versus that they're willing to fund. So that is absolutely terrific.
Wow, that is.
We have, yes, we have a second donation from the Foxborough High School Diamond Club for seven hundred dollars, and this is for game balls and tournament balls for baseball. If you want to take them one at a time, or the third one, we might as well just go right ahead, and you can vote separately on each. The third one is for the New England Patriots Foundation, and it is for one thousand dollars, and this is, if you remember back in the fall, Coach Martinelli was deemed the coach of the week. And so this is in honor of his coach of the week award from the New England Patriot Organization in the amount of one thousand dollars to Foxborough High School in honor of our coach of the week.
That's great.
So it's the Patriots. Oh, and sorry, there's actually a fourth. And the fourth is from the Taylor School PTO to Foxborough Public Schools for seven thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars, and this is for whiteboards and iPads that the PTO wanted to provide for the Taylor School in addition to what we already have. So that's a very generous donation.
Seems like a big donation for a PTO.
Do you think it's from BIT? I was just wondering. That's a huge, huge.
Well, I don't know the source of the fundraising, because everything goes in, but.
Or that specific cost.
Contributed, that must be, yeah.
Yeah, that's unbelievable.
Yeah.
I was very impressed with that number.
Great generosity by the Diamond Club and the Patriots Foundation and the Taylor School PTO. Anybody have any questions, or should we rattle through?
I don't have any questions. I did want to know, I thought the, the letter that was attached to the Patriots check was also very nice and complimentary towards Coach Martinelli, and again, it's, it's quite an honor for him. And I also think, you know, the use of the grant was important, too, and I think will be, it'll certainly be put to very good use in our football program, but it specifies that, you know, it's certain appropriate uses include the purchase of new helmets, equipment, helmet and equipment reconditioning, football field refurbishments, stipends for certified athletic trainer to assist in the prevention and treatment of injuries, football video equipment, all things football related. So I'm sure that the football program will find a, a good use for this donation, but it is quite an honor, so I just wanted to call that out. It's nice, nice that the Patriots are helping support our program as well.
Okay, do we have a, thank you, Tina. Do we have a motion to approve the first Diamond Club donation of three thousand sixty-two?
I make a motion to accept the donation of three thousand sixty-two and eighteen cents from Foxborough Diamond Club for the use of baseball batting cages.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Four zero. Next one is Foxborough High School Diamond Club, as Debbie said, for game balls and tournament balls.
Sure, I'll make the motion to accept the Foxborough High School Diamond Club donation in the amount of seven hundred dollars for game balls and tournament balls for baseball. I second.
All those in favor? Four zero.
And I'll go ahead, and I would like, with gratitude, to accept the one thousand.
All of them would, all of them.
Yes, all of them.
Much gratitude.
The thousand dollars for the contribution to the football program in honor of the coach of the week, Jack Martinelli, in the fall.
I second that.
All those in favor? Four zero.
I move to accept the check in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the Taylor PTO for their whiteboards and iPads as presented.
I'll second.
And I just want to, just a thought that pops into my head under discussion on that motion. Bill, do we have a policy on what we tend to pay for as a CIP or regular school budget versus what the PTO would contribute?
The only reason, sort of we do, but the difference on this one is this is not a classroom setup. This is really done for their media center.
Okay.
So what they, what they decided to do is advance the media center to have a wholly, you know, a whole different program than what we've got throughout the district. So your policy basically has been to be equal across the district. When we distribute, we have done all core curriculum rooms to have the whiteboards and projectors, so this was kind of a one-off thing that they had a different use for.
Good. That's, that's a great answer, because it just makes me feel a little more comfortable about why and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and the PTO is, you know, typically each school PTO has its own way of contributing, you know, different programs. They, there is a lot of consistency, but there are definitely individual different, well, differences between the schools.
Wish lists.
Different wish lists, yeah, exactly. That's a good way to put it.
I would describe this as a special project enhancement that they wanted to make.
Great.
That's a, that's a good way to put it.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you.
Excellent.
In, I think, record time in my years on the committee, we are on other matters.
Well, we have skipped one item. Are we going to try to accept that at another time?
You had already accepted it, and we had offered for her to come back, and I had given her today's date to present the check, so something just went wrong in the communication for tonight, but I, we had talked about having her come on this night, so.
So we have already accepted.
Yes, you have.
And do we remember the amount?
Yes, it's right there in your packet.
Right there in my packet, sorry.
Seven hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cents for STEM initiatives. So I'll just reach back out to her and ask her if she wants to come, and she may not at this point.
Did we decide how we're going to use that for STEM initiatives?
Um, we're, we're, at this point, all I've told her is that this, the one thing so far on our list is the new computer science course, that there will be an expense related to the robotics curriculum unit. So that's what we're holding that money for until we get an estimate of the expense there, but it's not a hundred percent.
Thank you.
So maybe the robots.
That's our best bet right now, but I don't want to, I want to hedge that a little bit.
Hedge it, that's fine.
Let's see, because we don't have a cost.
I know despite our short agenda tonight, there's an awful lot of stuff going on behind the scenes.
Sure is.
That a bunch of us are involved in, which is, which is great. So we probably have some other matters we can discuss. Do you want, do you want to kick that off?
Well, congratulations to the boys and girls basketball team. They have had an outstanding season, and the girls made it all the way into the finals, and just, as Athletic Director Caitlin Brown said, lost in a heartbreaker. They were ahead most of the game and lost in overtime, fifty-nine, fifty-seven, which was.
It was the second game, right?
It was a heartbreaker, yes. It was. The boys are advancing, and they will be playing Whitman-Hanson at Durfee Wednesday night, so they are in the quarterfinals. Is that the right term?
I'm not sure.
When you get to one of those four teams left.
I think Diana said it was the semi-finals.
Semi, semi. They were in the quarterfinals, now they're in the semifinals. I got to learn to speak the lingo a little bit better, but it's been a really exciting season for those two teams.
Sure has.
And our wrestling team has had unbelievable success. Congrats to Matt Kelly, who really advanced to the state levels. Great.
Third in the state, if I remember right?
Third, I think it said.
Wrestling, third.
Third in New England.
Wrestling.
Third in New England. That's awesome.
What else? Athletics-wise, ladies, help me remember.
So that basketball game in Durfee is Wednesday night.
It is Wednesday night. I think it's six-thirty Wednesday. And then, not to be outdone, our music students.
I know, isn't this great?
Go read it. Congratulations to the Foxborough High School Jazz Ensemble and Jazz Labian on their outstanding performances at the Southeast District Jazz Band Festival and Competition, sponsored by the Massachusetts Jazz Educators Association. The festival was held on Thursday evening, March fourth, King Philip Regional High School. Both Foxborough bands were awarded gold medals by a team of expert judges. As a result of this recognition, the two Foxborough bands have been invited to the MAJE State Finals, which will be held at Norwood High School on Saturday, March nineteenth. Outstanding musicians citations were awarded to Kayla Prag in the, in the Jazz La, Jazz Lab Band, Kayla Prag for alto, sax, and flute, Corey Hall on drums, and Will Potty on trombone. In the Jazz Ensemble, Brendan Johnson on trumpet, Tommy Watson on trombone, and Mitchell Groves on drums. In addition, Tommy Watson was selected by the judges as most valuable musician from all the bands in Division One. So whether you're an art student, whether you're, whether you're an athlete, a student athlete, whether you're an academically oriented student and that's your thing, everyone is really burning up the joint.
Well, don't forget our drama students, because on the nineteenth, they are going.
How could I forget?
You didn't forget. You were just setting me up, so I could.
I forgot to make my list. Can you tell us, Mikel, about what's happening with the Theater Guild?
Yes.
Please.
It's very exciting.
So on the, I'm blanking on the date, but about a week and a half ago, we went to prelims, which is basically a competition among, Ms. Maternik are advisors here and director. A competition among, I think it was eight or so schools, and there were several locations around the entire Massachusetts, and we were selected along with two other schools to move on to semis.
Awesome.
And, which is, which was really exciting for us. And then the nineteenth, we'll be competing at Ducksbury High School against six other schools, and I think two schools move on to states. So we're just, and we also have our show the twelfth of March, so next, this coming Saturday, uh, here at the high school at seven, so performing there, and then nineteenth at Ducksbury. So we're really excited and looking forward to just having fun and hopefully moving on, but I think we surpassed our goals so far, just getting to semis, so.
Wow, that's outstanding.
This is all your second year doing it, too, competing.
Yeah, and Ms. Maternik and Mr. Callahan are.
Very proud of you guys.
New-ish advisors, but second year, and I still remember talking to you about your selection, which was an amazingly brilliant selection. And I happened to talk to Mr. Craig on Sunday to talk about PCC this summer and whether he could come and help us with the parent program for that, which is my last thing I forgot, and first thing he said, when I said I called to talk about coming and doing a parent program for PCC like you did last year, and he said, "Did you hear what happened to the..." So I, it's, there's a lot of excitement around that. I can't wait to see it.
Well, they're doing it Saturday night at seven o'clock here at the high school, right?
Yes, they are.
She Kills Monsters, it's called.
Is it a short show? Is that how you're able to do it in these competition events? Is that what?
Yeah, it's a one-act play competition, so you have around forty-ish minutes, like five minutes to set up your stage, thirty, forty minutes to put on the show, and then five minutes to get off, so.
Wow.
Are you still president of the Theater Guild?
Uh, no, Emily Nutting, who was here last night, is president this year, yeah. But it's been a great year. I think everyone was super excited. Everyone left with a smile on their face, and.
It's great, congratulations.
It's a great start, and a great start for the program for next year.
I think we need to start keeping a list of all the awards that our various student groups receive. Theater, welcome onto the list. That's awesome.
Yeah, we had six students receive awards that night.
Oh, wow.
Two for tech, I think it was Tom Slater and Emily Nutting. Emily Nutting for lighting, and Tom Slater for costume design, and then Abby Spare, Sophie Philibert, Cole Hovey, and Katie Burke received acting awards.
Did I have that in last week? I think I had that in last packet.
Oh. It was in the paper this week.
Yeah.
It was in the paper.
That's awesome. Congratulations to all those winners.
Ms. Maternik, too.
Yes, and thank you.
I mean, we could just keep going on and on, but let's not forget the authors that were in the district last week for Read Across America Day or Week. So we had Mike Lupica, famous author, sports writer, very well-known, who writes terrific books for young adults and adolescents, and he was at the Ahern, courtesy of the Kraft Group and the New England Patriots.
Thank you again, Kraft Group.
Hooked us up with that, and he was terrific. He spoke for an hour. It was, wasn't it wonderful?
It was great.
He was terrific, really very engaging, and every single student in the school received a copy of his latest book that just was published January of two thousand sixteen. And that's courtesy, the first five hundred copies courtesy of Mr. Kraft, and the publisher, and Mr. Lupica himself. So every single student, we had nine hundred books delivered to the middle school.
Wow.
And the famous author, Peter Reynolds, was at the Borough School last Friday for an author visit, so.
That's awesome. And then we did Read Across America at the Ahern on Friday morning. A lot of volunteers went in and read to the fifth graders for a half hour, and Decca is going to the, like, you know what, I would love, no, Melissa, I would love you to share.
All right. This weekend, Decca is going to Boston for All States, so, and then the two people who, if they advance, they can go to Tennessee for Nationals.
Correct.
And all of that, our music program is going to All States as well in Boston this weekend, so a lot going on.
There's something Wednesday night with the music also, isn't there?
Oh, yeah. The UMass Amherst Wind Ensemble is coming to do a workshop and master class with the students in the wind on, in the wind ensemble for Foxborough, and then at seven o'clock, they have a concert here, so. If anything, nothing to do on Wednesday night, should be good.
So many good things going on, you honestly can't remember them all.
I, I went to the principal's coffee today, and this is just this week what's going on, the whole long list of things, and just a lot of really great, great stuff that's happening right now and, and coming up in the next few weeks, too.
I would, I would think several people would beg us to come to Foxborough High School and say, "You have to join school choice. We want to go to your high school."
Well, not, not only at the high school, the Ahern, I think Soucicle, the musical, is coming up.
That's coming up. Not this weekend, but next weekend.
It's the next weekend.
It's the week after there, so that's how I remember it.
So we've got good, good stuff happening there, too.
Yes. That looks like a lot of fun. Just look at it away, because I'll just keep thinking of things, so our short meeting will turn into its usual length.
Well, it's turning into a celebration.
It's really been a great.
I did have a question. What, did the Capitol, the CIP meet this past weekend, or is that What, did the capital, the CIP meet this past week, or is that this coming up? Okay.
Yeah, this is Saturday.
I lost track of when that was, too, so I was curious about that. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tina?
Yep, I think I'm good.
Debbie?
Uh, remember to change your clock, spring ahead this weekend.
That means I lose, that means I lose an hour, right?
That means, yes.
I don't like springing ahead.
Bring ahead, fall behind.
I like falling back.
I like falling back. I like that it's an hour.
I like, I like fall behind, yeah.
How do you like seventy degrees on Wednesday?
I would love seventy, I can't wait for seventy degrees on Wednesday.
I'll settle for sixty-eight. I'll be pushing.
Our community field is being put to good use by our young lacrosse players.
Oh, I loved, I loved seeing it all lit up and, and being used tonight when we drove in.
Spring sports already starting?
I think tennis starts next week, yeah.
Michael, Melissa, anything else from you guys?
Um, there's an art, so people who won gold keys for the scholastics, there is an art show. I don't know where it is, but it was over the weekend, and I think it is throughout this weekend and next weekend.
It, it does continue, I know it didn't end this weekend. I forget where it is, it used to be John Hancock, it is gone, but it's not.
Yeah, I'm not too sure, but there's a lot of people from Foxborough who got gold keys, so.
Wow. Well, we'll have to get that list out at another meeting.
Um, our student council is also going on a high in this conference, an annual trip. I think it's the ninth, maybe?
Yeah, it's the ninth through eleventh, and myself, Abby Schofield, and Andre Berry, we're doing a workshop with the whole.
On what?
Uh, we're doing it on how you, like, express yourself and like, what, like, um, let's say, like, if you have, like, what you think about, like, bad about yourself, and like, how you can overcome that, and like, how, like, you express yourself to people, and like.
Great, congratulations. Good luck.
Such talent.
Cal, have you made any decisions yet? Melissa, she had, but that's where she was going. Have you made any decisions as far as college yet?
Um, no, yeah, I'm, I've gotten accepted to three schools, I'm just waiting on the rest of them.
The rest of it, okay.
The end of the month. Yeah. We're all waiting patiently. We got all our early ones, now we're waiting for these ones.
Still early.
We did all the early ones back in November, we knew all those, but now we're just waiting for the last bunch.
Amy?
Waiting game.
Marilyn?
We've talked too much this meeting. I can move to adjourn the meeting if you'd like.
In a second, Bill?
Wait for Bill and Janet?
Janet?
It's not eight o'clock yet, this is wonderful.
You know, it's probably not the short agenda, it's probably the fact Mr. Uden's not here that we went so quickly. That's for you, Steve.
He's joking, Steve.
He missed a good meeting to miss it.
I know.
Go ahead, Marilyn.
You know, you know who's going to be envious that he wasn't here for this one is Tom. I mean, Mike, twenty, twenty years, how short this was.
Yes, right, that's right.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I shall second that motion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Good night, everybody.